Trish Elglieson, Assistant City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, October 16th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for October 16th, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input regarding the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access codes that appear on the broadcast and live stream and are posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you'd like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must include a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance at tonight's meeting is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousseau.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh, and I'll turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Trish. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The mayor will now present the proclamation for tonight's agenda. Proclamation number one is Keeping the Lights On After School, October 20th, 2023. Proclamation number two is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2023. Proclamation number three is Arts and Humanities Month, Proclamation, October 2023. And proclamation number four is Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2023.
All right, thank you, Trish. I do believe for Keeping the Lights On After School, we have our friend Beth Magori here to accept this proclamation.
Good evening, friends. I'm Beth Magori, the Director of Donor Relations at St. Mark Youth and Richmond. And tonight I'm here, I feel like, as a representative for all of our after-school programs. We are all in the same place, struggling to keep our lights on after school. Every single after-school program in our community is struggling financially to make sure that all of our children in town have a safe place to be. And I got to hang out with our kids because fortunately, we've partnered with the Boys and Girls Club at St. Mark this year, and they have a safe space with us, using the space at the Boys and Girls Club. So I walked down the street today, and I walked into lots of jumping on Beth, and lots of hugs and kisses, and all sorts of good things. And what that really is, is really good relationships with our kids. And that's what we need for all of our children here in Dubuque, that every child, no matter what school you're at, you have an opportunity to feel safe and loved after school. One of our kiddos said to my boss, first couple weeks of program, and said, "You know what? I get to have dinner here. That means I don't have to think about it later." Third grader. Third grader worried about where she was going to eat dinner that night. And because of collaboration, because we're partnering with other nonprofits in town, we're able to keep our lights on today. But it really is only because people like you all care about our kids, our community cares about our kids. We are almost collectively funded by our local businesses and individual donors like you. And so, we're thankful for always being able to be present here, and that you guys always consider us whenever opportunities are to be funded. So we're super thankful.
Beth, thank you very much for being here to accept this, and obviously, for all you do, we always thank you for that, but then also for sharing that information with us. I think it's important that we hear those stories, and that the whole community hears them. So thank you very much for being here tonight. The City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas after-school programs provide critical support for the academic growth and well-being of youth and offer new experiences and opportunities that help young people learn and grow, after-school programs provide innovative, hands-on opportunities for youth to engage in learning and connect with caring adults and peers in a safe and supportive environment. These supports are all the more important today in the wake of the pandemic. Whereas St. Mark Youth and Richmond has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 26th, 2023, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas nearly 25 million families report that they would enroll their child in an after-school program if one were available, for every child in a program, four are waiting to get in. And whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing operating challenges so severe that they are forced to consider closing their doors and turning off their lights. And whereas the City of Dubuque is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that help our children learn and grow while helping them develop the skills essential for success in life and work. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 20th of October, 2023, as Lights On After School Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and hereby enthusiastically endorse Lights On After School and commit our community to engage in innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school.
And you're all invited to celebrate on the 23rd here in Dubuque. We're hanging out with the rising stars. They're doing acting, and it's so much fun to watch. So you're all invited. 4 o'clock.
Thank you, Beth. Good to see you. Okay, next up, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I believe Angela Heister and Jenny Sheehan are here. I hope I said your name correctly there, Angela.
Heister.
Heister, thank you very much for correcting me.
You did mine right. Yeah. Well, we just want to thank you, Mayor Brad Kavanaugh, and the City Council for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Jenny and I serve all of Dubuque and Delaware County. Last year, Waypoint Domestic Violence Comprehensive Program empowered 2,254 survivors in eastern Iowa through advocacy, safety planning, and support.
Some of the services we provide include spreading awareness throughout the community through presentations and resource tables at local colleges and partnering agencies.
We also work together with the Dubuque County Attorney's Office to safety plan with each survivor if a motion to vacate or modify a no-contact order is requested.
We partner with the Dubuque Police to provide a voluntary service to victims at the time of an assault or in the following days when they feel ready to talk.
So Waypoint Advocates, I'm sorry, Waypoint Advocates share answering the 24/7 resource and support line. Last year, 7,997 calls were taken to provide guidance to individuals impacted by domestic violence.
We also hold a Finding Your Voice support group at the Riverview Center every Thursday from 1:00 to 2:00 PM to bring connection and support to victims and survivors.
We support victims and survivors by providing resources to things like emergency housing, food, utilities, clothing, transportation to a safe place. We provide one-on-one counseling. We accompany victims to court for proceedings regarding their abuse to file a civil no-contact order or to keep them safe from their abuser. We walk alongside them in their journey to recovery and help them to move forward.
Violence prevention requires a critical mass of people to displace cultural norms. No one has to do everything, but everyone has to do something. Thank you.
Well, thank you both for being here, Angela and Jenny, and for bringing awareness to this issue on an annual basis like this, but then even more so, and getting out to all the events that you talked about, and making sure that you keep this top of mind for people. It's very important that we all continue to hear about this, and thank you so much for the work that you do, and for being here tonight to accept this proclamation. City Dubuque proclamation: Whereas one in three women and one in four men will experience some form of domestic violence during their lifetime, and whereas intimate partner violence impacts victims, children, family, friends, and the community at large, and whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but is experienced in all economic, racial, ethnic, educational, societal, and religious groups, and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas perpetrators of domestic violence should be held accountable for their actions, and victims should have access to support and services to help them overcome their experience. And whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide support to victims of intimate partner violence, and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. And whereas a coordinated effort from all community members is needed to put a stop to this heinous crime. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and encourage everyone to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. All right, our third proclamation this evening is Arts and Humanities Month, accepted by our own Bonnie Spurling.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Spurling. I'm the Arts and Cultural Affairs Manager.
And I'm Nick Holder. I'm currently the Chair of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission.
Sorry, I get nervous in front of, he's a performer. Before you read the proclamation, which is Arts and Humanities Month, as a new transplant to Dubuque, I can tell you that every month feels like Arts and Humanities Month in Dubuque. It is clear that the support of this council, ongoing, helps support not only individual creatives and the arts and cultural organizations, but, as we'll hear in the economic study, brings over $70 million in economics prosperity to our community. So I just wanted to thank you from my heart for what you're doing for arts and humanities.
And I would just quickly echo what Bonnie says, is both a community member is someone who also leads an arts organization, the support that we see from the community writ large in terms of the various different arts and cultural organizations, as well as the work that the commission gets to do on behalf of the city through our different programs, whether it's Art on the River or our grant programs, it's tremendous in terms of the amount of support that we see, and we couldn't do it without the support of not only the council but the community members. So thank you all, on behalf of the council as well as the arts and cultural organizations here in Dubuque.
Well, and thank you both, Nick, very much for your service on the commission and also to the community at large. And Bonnie, welcome. Thank you very much for being here. I don't think we had a chance to tell you congratulations and welcome officially as a council, so thank you very much for being here and for serving in this capacity, and then being here to accept this proclamation this evening. City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas the nation's 120,000 nonprofit arts organizations, the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, the nation's 4,500 local arts agencies, and the Arts and Humanities Councils of the 50 states and the six U.S. jurisdictions and districts have regularly issued official proclamations on an annual basis designating October as National Arts and Humanities Month. And whereas, despite significant losses due to the coronavirus pandemic, the creative industries remain among the most vital sectors of the economy, providing innovative opportunities for community development, creating jobs and economic activity within their own and across sectors, and making communities attractive for tourism attraction, business development, and workforce retention. And whereas Dubuque's nonprofit arts and culture sector generates $70.4 million in economic activity annually, supporting 1,527 local jobs and generating $6.7 million in local and state government revenue. And whereas our community prioritizes investment in grant support, public art programming, and ongoing implementation of Dubuque's Arts and Culture Master Plan. And whereas the arts and humanities embody so much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in creating connection and telling the stories of and amongst our families, communities, and country. And whereas local arts and humanities programs are dedicated to inclusive access, diverse representation, and equitable empowerment of creatives, culture bearers, and humanities scholars toward a more connected, just, and inclusive Dubuque. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2023, as Arts and Humanities Month. All right, and last up for proclamations is Extra Mile Day this evening. Heather Satterley is with us to accept this proclamation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me here. I'm always excited to come here for Extra Mile Day. I would say that it's my favorite, but you can't ever say that, you know, you have a favorite child, right? But I do love to take this opportunity for this proclamation to share a little bit more about what's been going on in Dubuque as far as volunteering goes. So currently, Adopt a Spot has five volunteers adopting Washington Park, Mouse Park, Jackson Park, Allison Henderson, and Flatiron Park. Exciting. The shovel crew, DBQ Shovel Crew, had 20 volunteers this last winter, recruiting for this upcoming winter, if you know anyone. We have, I don't actually know how many total volunteers we have with boards and commissions, so thank you to all of them. And then, a very exciting bit of news that has come out, so Spartans Make a Difference Day had 715 volunteers with 2,675 volunteer hours just about two weeks ago. So I would like to say that with your support, the volunteer infrastructure in Dubuque is strong and thriving, so thank you so much.
Wow, thank you, Heather. That's fantastic news to be able to hear some of those great numbers and all the people that are giving their time and effort to be able to make Dubuque a better place. So thank you for all that you do, and thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas Dubuque, Iowa is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dubuque, Iowa is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dubuque, Iowa is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Dubuque, Iowa acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2023. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2023, as Extra Mile Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge each individual in the community to take time on this day and not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place. All right, Trish.
Next on the agenda are the consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to have one of the items removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. Please remember to state your name and address clearly for the record. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. Please state the item that you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5.
All right, thank you, Trish. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Yeah, please come on up, and you can state the item, and feel free to go ahead and line up at the podium here, and you can come on up and state your item as you wish. And don't forget name and address too, please. Sorry, I want to throw that in there.
Kenneth Kiss, 1684 Four Months Court. I'm representing Dubuque Audubon Society. Before you today, we had a petition that we wanted to get sent in, and I just have some additional information.
So I'll tell you what, Ken, if you can just tell me the item, we'll go through that first, and then we'll pull the items from the consent agenda first, and then I'll call you back up to talk about each item separately.
So it was item 8, about the consent item with Dubuque Audubon Society.
Excellent, all right. Item 8, thank you very much, Ken.
Hi, Nicole Ketchum. I reside at 1776 Custer Street. I'd like to have number 5.
Okay, thank you very much, Nicole. We'll call you back up.
My name is Margaret Owens at 1905 Romberg, and item number 22. Body of city property at 1860 Hawthorne.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor City Council, Robin Kennick, 2020 helm. Ditto, number 22.
Number 22, okay. Thank you very much, Robin. Anyone else this evening? Okay, seeing no one else here, do we have anyone virtually, Corey?
We do not.
Okay. Anything else from the City Clerk's office? Okay, then I will bring it back to the table, please, for a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 5, number 8, and number 22.
Second by Farber.
Okay, we got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Pass is 7-0. So then we will move on, please, to item number, actually, I'd like to, I think I'm going to do these in order, just to make things cleaner. So we've got item number 5, 8, and 22. So I'm going to start, please, with item number 5. So Ms. Ketchum, Nicole, you mentioned that you wanted to pull that, so I'll let you speak first.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Nicole Ketchum, and I reside at 1776 Custer Street. I submitted in, I believe you guys have all received a copy of that, of the tree that was in the alley that fell onto our home in August. Just as I was sitting outside, I read more documents tonight that just something else was going to be sent to us. I know that there's things that are referenced in there about how the city is not liable because the tree wasn't rotten, they didn't know it was rotten. The alley behind our home that we do not have access to, city employees multiple times a week with the dump trucks, recycling trucks, city trucks go up and down that alley. It is gravel. They're hitting constantly that said tree and other trees, so I find it very hard to believe that they cannot come back and talk with their departments that there's problems in these alleyways. There's also commercial, other delivery trucks that go down that, as well as other garbage trucks. So we have no access to that alley from our property at all. So this has been a nightmare for us. Between, all of you can see the documents I put together dealing with your insurance company, our insurance company, the city attorney, and we're just asking, based on our insurance agent, I talked to them again this morning, and we are facing a surcharge of three to seven years because of this claim that we are going to have to take on. And because we've only had the home a year, the other thing is that we could possibly be dropped, and then we are going to be in a high category for risk. I do not feel that that is something that we should have to take on when, again, we had no control of the tree, we couldn't see it was rotting from our side either. So, I mean, that is just kind of where we're at. We would really like you guys to consider, so we do not have to be penalized for this ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole, for your comments. Do we have any other public input on this item, item number 5, on the consent agenda? Okay, now I'll bring it back to the table for questions or discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I would, I did have my curiosity peaked a little bit. What is our procedure, please, for city vehicles hitting trees and letting people know, you know, private property owners perhaps know that they need to attend to this tree because city vehicles and other vehicles are hitting that tree?
I don't remember. So, I think there's a difference between tree ownership, if we're talking about a privately-owned tree or a city-owned tree. Anytime a city employee, if they make contact with something, that should be addressed or reported. We have no information that that has occurred in this situation. But if we get a claim that, for example, a citizen is aware that a city employee has hit something, it's investigated, their supervisor would possibly go out, a police report would possibly be done, our insurance carrier may send an adjuster out to look and make a determination of action, damage, et cetera. And again, the outcome of that could vary based on whether it was privately owned, if it was city-owned, if there was damage, no damage, et cetera. But in this case, there's nothing on file that there's ever been any incident of this tree in particular being hit by anyone.
Thank you. And have we ever asked or offered, you know, she was talking about her private insurance company penalizing her, do we ever say anything in support of, you know, it's not really their fault, nobody's fault, or there's extenuating circumstances, and it's not that, you know, the city is not liable, but we've heard this, and we would appreciate special consideration, or anything like that?
So this premise within the law, that you have to be negligent in order to be legally liable for a situation involving a tree, is the same in a private insurance situation involving two private property owners? So take out the municipal piece of this. If you have two neighboring property owners, okay, so if I have a next-door neighbor, and their tree falls on my home, and there was no indication that there was anything wrong with that tree, and it falls on my house or garage and damages it, I go through my homeowner's insurance for that claim. That is a common industry practice related to all homeowner's insurance. Now, if my neighbor had a tree, and it was visibly dying, and that you could see it, and it looked like it was maybe going to start dropping limbs, at that point, you are on notice that there is a defect with the tree, and if the neighbor didn't do something to address that situation, if it does fall and cause damage to my property, the tree owner is legally liable because they had notice and an opportunity to address it before it caused damage and did not do so. In this scenario, based on everything that has been submitted and information gathered by the insurance companies, there was no indication there was anything wrong with this tree, which is why it was denied, and the property owners who had the damage go through their own private insurance. So this is an industry standard, their insurance company and adjuster would be aware of this as well, and they likely would have the same response if they were on the other side in this situation.
And thank you very much for that information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other discussion, questions? Mr. Sprank, go ahead. Oh, Mr. Johnson.
Unfortunately for the homeowner, this is kind of how trees work. I was on the receiving end of that as well. I had a neighbor's tree that was dropping things on my property and caused some damage, and I had to go through my own insurance. But then I had a conversation with the neighbor, and every time it would drop a little bit more, I'd make the neighbor aware that the tree's doing more, and the neighbor was great. She was immediately hiring somebody to come and take care of whatever happened, and made arrangements to take the tree down. It's kind of what happened here, too. We became aware of the problem, and we took the tree down. The tree's gone now, can't hurt anybody else, but you can't have It's just not practical, as recognized by the courts in decades and decades of litigation about trees falling over, that anybody could be out checking trees to see if a branch might fall off of one foot someday. So as painful as it is to be the homeowner, this has got a tree dropped on you, that's why we buy insurance, why we pay for insurance. I don't think it's ethical or proper that they're surcharging you or threatening you with cancellation, but that's kind of between you and them. We can't take that kind of reach. That's the other thing that the courts have recognized in decades of litigation over trees, that cities have finite resources and as soon as we pay for a branch that just kind of fell for no reason onto whatever, that expectation now exists that you pay for every branch that ever falls and pretty quick it becomes impossible to do. So I think we're trying to do the responsible thing here, and I'm really sorry for your loss, but we didn't cause it, we didn't have the legal triggers, didn't occur to cover the loss, to allow us to say, you're right, we need to pay for this because the law says that we need to protect our citizens and not pay for it.
Mr. Sprank.
It's a gray area, this one is, I kind of feel to some extent, because they have no access to this alley, they don't drive down it, so... And we didn't know that the tree was bad, and the city didn't know the tree was bad, they didn't know the tree was bad. It's not an easy area to be in. So, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well with me. I really wish we could legally say something that their insurance could understand it. So it's... This is disheartening that we can't exactly help somebody out with something that's fairly simple. I wish, though, we could now create a policy, though, if our city staff sees something or notices something, they start reporting it, so that way we don't run into these issues for future reference, because we still have a lot of trees, we have a lot of other things in the community going on. And I think this is what we could use this as a learning lesson for sure, but I just... This doesn't sit well with me regardless, so that's all I got on it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Yeah, I have to say, this is a tough one, too, because, I mean, anybody who has, you know, lives somewhere and owns property or even just, you know, wherever you live, has a car, anything like that, that this can happen to, it's a difficult situation to go through and we know that. Unfortunately, I have to agree with our city attorney and the general agreement here that this is something that the courts have decided on from the case of the city, and it works very much like a property, a private property owner. I really... I'm with Mr. Sprank that it just doesn't feel great, but it is what the law says, and part of our role up here is to make sure that we're protecting the city of Dubuque as a whole, and that is the entire community and how it can function in this way. So unfortunately, in this particular situation, I'm inclined to vote to concur with the recommendation of our city attorney.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and concur.
Second. We got a motion by Resnick, we got a second by Jones. Any other discussion? Okay. With that, Trish, will you take the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
No.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
That motion passes six to one. So next up is number eight, which is the Dubuque Audubon Society, so Mr. Ken Kiss, if you wouldn't mind, please. And then just a procedural note, because I think I might have done this a little bit backwards, so I just want to make sure, because we don't usually, we don't have too many people pull things from the consent agenda. Would it be... It would probably be cleaner if we take a motion from the council following the input from public input, take a motion from the council, and then open discussion?
Yes, that will work.
Okay, thank you. And we'll do that, just so everybody knows, I'm going to ask for a motion after we're done hearing public input then. So, Mr. Kiss, thank you very much for giving me that moment.
Ken Kiss, again, and I'm with the Dubuque Audubon Society. And before you, we had a petition that in support of Technology Park making a grassland preserve, that we wanted you to accept. I just wanted to say that we realize the decision you made and that I appreciate the city's willingness not to mow the property and to protect the migrating grassland nesting birds and to allow us to develop and place signs in the area. In addition to that petition, I would like to hand out the final study from Thomas Rosberg, Drake University. I have eight copies here amongst you.
Sure, yeah, you can hand them to Corey, thank you.
So I think I... The preliminary study I shared with you earlier, but this is the final report. So my last request is if the city staff would work with Talon Development and Eagle Construction so that we don't see a repeat in the area of mowing in the nesting season, because I see no work has been done. Just a fence has been put up, and so essentially, nothing's been done, so I don't want the same event to be repeated in the spring or whenever they're going to start. So whatever the delay is, I just definitely don't want to see the repeat disturbance of the nesting birds in that area. So that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any other public input on item number eight for the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none here, anything virtually, Corey?
No.
No, thank you.
No.
Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Jones.
We'll receive and file the petition.
Well, second.
We've got a motion by Jones and a second by Rousseau. Discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I wondered if Mr. Van Milligan might reiterate a recent email that was sent to Marty Korfman that kind of summarizes where we are in the process. If you might have that mic?
Sure. Thank you. City manager, Mike Van Milligan. Well, after the city council goal-setting in August, I received an email from Marty Korfman, representative of the Dubuque Audubon Society, and she had asked, I appreciate knowing how things ended up with your planning session, what can we expect for next steps, and then she also invited me and others to their upcoming program on September 21st that the Audubon Society was having a guest speaker come in for their meeting. And so I responded to her, thank you for this follow-up correspondence. As I believe you are aware, at the beginning of the three days, and in this I'm referring to the council goal-setting, the three days, the city council had approximately 130 items to consider for consideration as priorities, and those came from all sources, including resident groups like yours. By the end of the third evening, the city council needed to narrow that list down to 10 items, and they were able to successfully accomplish that. Your request did not make the final list of 10 priorities. However, that does not mean the issue is being ignored. The city manages much of the city-owned property to attract pollinators and other wildlife. The city is now more conscious of the issue of grassland-dependent migratory birds. The city will continue to manage the vacant Dubuque Technology Park site and others as appropriate, to not disturb the birds until the lot is sold. When it is sold, the city will make every reasonable attempt to work with the private party who purchases the property to make them aware of the qualities of the property, and they can decide how that fits into their plans. Until that time, you had mentioned to me the desire of the Audubon Society to erect a temporary observation platform. I would like to learn more about that concept if you are available to meet with me. I do plan to attend your September program, although I might be a little late, and thank you for the invitation. And so, a couple of things that are not in here, since then, Marty has communicated with me and said that they believe that you can see the grasslands just fine without an observation platform, so I don't think they plan on pursuing that, but they did talk about some signage, and so I'm going to discuss that with them, the signage. And then it was just brought up about the Fox Hills development behind Asbury Plaza and the status, and our last communication with the developers included that the July delay brought on about the questions brought up about the grassland birds caused their grading contractor to move on to another project, and so is not going to come back to their project till he's done with that one. They expect that to happen yet this year, so I would anticipate that the grading will be well underway before next nesting season, and so there probably wouldn't be any opportunity for nesting, at least in the places where they do the grading.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just got to take a second and thank the Audubon Society for all that you've taught me, who knew nothing about migratory birds, and frankly, didn't care to before you came along and you've piqued my interest and got me thinking about it. And I don't know, I think the other folks had more interest and had a better baseline to work from, but you've given us a lot to think about and a lot of great information that I didn't have in my resources, and we're going to try and make good decisions going forward. I don't... I'm not ready to give up that piece of property permanently, but I'm sure willing to take the steps right now to not mow, to make it as bird-friendly as it can be while we own it, and to follow the steps that Mike suggests to work with the potential new owner and see if we can... And make you accessible to them as well, so that they can make educated choices in what they do with the land. So, thank you. It's been a whirlwind of a while since this first came to our attention, and it's got me looking at things that I had never taken the time to look at before, and I appreciate that.
Any others? I would agree with Mr. Jones. I really appreciate this conversation. I appreciate getting more information from you tonight in the study that you have, and I very much appreciate that you're in active conversation with our city manager and city staff about ways to work on policies that are actually going to be able to protect the birds who are there. I do think it's important, there's plenty of land that is not in use, that is waiting for development or in other stages of use, and I think it's important that we have policies that are able to protect wildlife while they're there. And then, as we do that, learn some more and continue to explore this idea of what it would look like to have a preserve in the city of Dubuque. I don't think what I've heard at this desk is that the council that is sitting here is entirely against this idea. I think what I did hear from the council the last time we talked about this particular piece of land is that we were against the idea of it on this piece of land, because it's sitting there waiting for development. So with that said, I think I'd like to see this conversation continue, both here in public, but then also just in conversations and how we can be educated as a council, how you can educate the rest of the community, and we can maybe help to do that, but then also create policies that are actually going to fit and be able to protect the wildlife we want to protect. So, thank you again for being here tonight and bringing this to our attention. All right. Seeing no further discussion or questions, we have a motion and a second to receive and file this item. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. All right, next up is number 22. I had two individuals, sorry, my notes got mixed up, who wanted to pull this item, so you come back up and give us some comments, we'd appreciate it. Was it Margaret?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Margaret.
They made this for tall people, I can tell.
You know, there's actually a little...
A button.
A black button on the right.
Your right hip.
You can push down and it'll go down. There you go.
There, now it's made for you.
See me? Right on. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I appreciate having the time to speak with you tonight. I am originally from the Point area. I did spend some time out of state and now I'm back. I love my neighborhood, I love the Point, and I have not met one person who is for this development that's down there where the old bowling alley was. I know that it's for low-income people, and I don't know how you can have something for low-income people when there is no stores, no sidewalks. And I know I'm supposed to be reading from this, but I'm losing my place, okay? It does upset me to know that you want to have two apartment buildings, 100 units of each one. Is there anywhere else in this city where we have such a thing? I'm sorry, I'm asking a question.
But we are actually not allowed to answer while you're commenting, so just you can go ahead and give us your comments.
Okay, I apologize.
We'll be writing questions down and we'll get to a point tonight...
Okay.
Where we'll have a discussion.
Thank you.
I am going to need to continue on, and then I'm going to tell you after you're done that we're probably not going to be able to talk to you about this until another item later on this agenda, but feel free to say whatever you want right now.
Thank you.
Within about a five-minute window, if you could, please, and then you can have a chance again later.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I have been in other areas of the country where they have made big apartment buildings, and then it ends up that people do not get... Take care of them. There's a lot of garbage around, they look really pretty and really fancy when they go up, but a year or two later, it doesn't look all that nice. This has always been a recreational area, and I just really don't understand why it's not going to stay that way. I always look forward to the Fourth of July weekend or that part of time when it draws hordes of people over to the riverfront and to watch the Fourth of July. I would like to recommend it, instead of building those two big apartment buildings there, that we take the money or we take our resources and go ahead and repair some of the buildings that we have in downtown Dubuque that are so beautiful, instead of making another hole in the ground. I do agree that we do need to shelter our people of low income. I just think that there's better ways to do it. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments.
That was too short for me, anyhow.
You can move it up, Robin, if you want.
Don't worry. Mayor City Council, Robin Kennicar, 2021 helm. Many of us at the Pointy Bird Association, as Samuel will talk in just a moment, disagree with this idea of putting this apartment complex on the Hawthorne or the bowling beyond area. Part of the reason is, too, we feel it can be used for recreational aquatic center, a recreational field of some type, and we feel there's a lot of safety concerns with the issue of no sidewalks. Canadian Pacific Railroad, as already mentioned, they're going to increase the amount of traffic going down the railroad. You know, all these kids that they talk about are going to be in this building, or older people, or college students, how are they going to get across? And I've mentioned before, you know, the old, the George Pacific Building is up for sale. Assessed, according to Assessor, is $3.2 million. There's got to be some way we can join with the city or private or public partnership to maybe buy that building. That way, the kids can walk right across the Finger Overpass, mom and dad in the alley can walk across the overpass, or right down to Eagles and Audubon. They can't go to Marshall. Marshall's packed, I'm told. So they have to go down to Audubon or Prescott. Much easier and not have to do all the bussing. We won't have to worry about the trains, no one will get killed, and if we do have to put this complex there in that corner of Hawthorne, then we're looking at putting an overpass then, because these kids have to get some way to get around, and I'm sure they're not going to walk the flood wall of 40 below just to get down to Eagles. That's just not going to happen. The kids are going to wander everywhere, and so are the elderly. And I know, excuse me, we do need a lot of housing in Dubuque. And the surveys I've come into in the last few weeks, actually talking to college students, the number-one thing that they've talked about, housing's number-two on the surveys. One is salaries need to be increased in Dubuque and in Iowa. Right now, we're 29 out of 50 in the state for wages. And according to the Bureau of Statistics, just last year here, we're... Dubuque is 14% below the national average. Now, we all kind of know that. Now, with college students, according to ZipRecruiter just... Recruiter a couple of days ago, the average starting range for college students is $16.06 an hour, that's 25% of the college students here in Iowa, up to $53.27 per hour for 75% of the kids here in Iowa. Now, if you're facing $100,000 student loan, it's pretty hard to live on $16 an hour and trying to go for an affordable place. And we do need affordable housing, and I mean really affordable housing. $900, $1,000, $1,200 for rent for one bedrooms or even two bedrooms is outrageous compared to the outrageous wages we make here in Dubuque. So Dubuque's trying. We're getting on the right ballpark for wages, but we're just not quite there yet. So we really need to get this upgraded on that. And I think that's about really what I had to say. Nothing against a gentleman who wants to build apartments, we just think it'd be a better place someplace else. And we know that this part is city-owned, and I'll answer the zoning question that the young lady asked before, and her question was, who owned the property next door? And one of the gentlemen said it was a private entity. It's an LLC that owns that property. And trying to find that on the Assessor, it's a living nightmare trying to get that information. But that's what I wanted to say to you tonight. I hope that you decide to put this to an end and not go for it and look for a different location. There's options. There's options here, people, you know there is. And believe me, this town is worth it, and so are the people. I'll let somebody else speak.
Thank you, Robin. So, I'm going to just, I'm going to point something out here as we're, as we're having this discussion. There are actually several items on the agenda tonight that relate to this particular property that has been mentioned. We're in a bit of a bind as a city council. We have, we have this, a sort of a strange legal obligation to not have a discussion about this particular parcel until we get to public hearing number one, which is a request to rezone property at 1860 Hawthorne Street, and that's because of the way that this, it's because of the type of zoning that it's discussing. So, what I would encourage, if I can say, just tell me to stop talking if I need to stop talking, but what I would encourage is that maybe we hold off on the discussion of this particular property until we get to that public hearing.
Yes.
Because we're talking about this item in particular, not that we did anything wrong, I don't want to point anybody out for doing anything wrong here. What I want to say, though, is that this item in particular is about plating the land for basically certain outlines on the land, whereas the discussion that it sounds like you want to have would actually be more appropriate later on in a few minutes. Is that fair, Krenna?
Yes, the appropriate time for discussion of that by the council would be during the public hearings.
Right.
Due to the state law limitations.
Yeah, during which time the public will have ample opportunity to provide more input. So you kicked us off, but I think if it's okay with everybody else, I might encourage more public input during that public hearing. So with that said, I'm going to entertain a motion here from the desk, and then we'll go on.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolutions.
Second by Wethel.
I got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Any more discussion or questions regarding the plating of city property at 1860 Hawthorne? Seeing none? Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
We'll move on to items to be set for public hearing. We have three agenda items to be set for public hearing. They are Second Amendment to Grant Agreement with Virtual Velocity LLC for rehabilitation of 9, pardon me, of 1199 Central Avenue, setting for November 6th. Purchase Agreement Approval for Potential Sale of Hendrick Site Property to Dubuque County. And City Purchase of Dubuque County-Owned Parking Lot for November 6th. And Item Three is Resolution of Necessity for the Proposed Urban Renewal Plan for the Emory Urban Renewal District for November 20th.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Sprank.
A motion by Rousseau and a second by Sprank. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next on the agenda are the Boards and Commissions Review. Tonight, we have the Application Review for the Investment Oversight Advisory Commission.
All right, and we have one three-year term through July 1st, 2026, on the Investment Oversight Advisory Commission, and one applicant, Daniel Garza. Do we have anyone here to speak to this application this evening? I see no one here in chambers, anyone virtually?
No.
And anything from the city clerk's office?
No.
Okay. So with that, we can move on then to public hearings.
Moving on to public hearings, at this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing they would like to speak to. Please state your name and address clearly for the record. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question. Phone participant, pardon me, phone participants, please state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is Request to Rezone Property at 1860 Hawthorne Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to council meetings prior to the meeting, which is to be finally passed and be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wally, where am I, planning services director? Just searching for my PowerPoint presentation that's out here somewhere, I believe. I'd actually seen it out here. Can I go pull it off of the internet for that?
She's coming to save the day here.
Is she? Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's included up there. Yeah, I don't think I got it. Yeah, I don't think I got it. I think I definitely got it.
Do you want to talk while I find it?
Technical difficulty here, so.
Wouldn't be a night without one, right? That's the way it works these days.
You are very tall.
So while she's getting there to pull up my presentation, I'll address one of the plat discussion that was brought up before you. The request, sorry. The consent item involved a plating of the property, and I will show you in, as soon as Eric Muller with his fast fingers here, pull it up. Oh, okay. Right there.
This one here?
Yep.
Okay, we got to shut down PowerPoint first as well. Sorry about that.
You're like the Wizard of Oz, like the man behind the curtain.
She was having fun about using the microphone.
This is Eric, everybody. You never see him, but there he is.
The man, the man behind.
Thank you, Eric.
So, once again, Wally, where am I, planning services director with the city of Dubuque. So, the property in question, as you look at this aerial photo before you, it's an area that's included inside the hashed outline of the property, and the request is rezone the property from commercial recreation to a planned unit development with a PR plan residential designation. So just kind of go over the process for review, because I think that gets brought up a lot from the public. This request requires a rezoning, and it's what we call a quasi-judicial rezoning to a planned unit development, which requires that the city council can only take the information that's presented to you tonight before the council, before you. I know it's difficult sometimes for the public, because a lot of times the public would like to reach out to you individually. However, state law does not allow you to interact with the public unless you're at this public hearing request. Hence, some of the discussion you had previously with the consent item discussion at the location. So this requires a review and recommendation by the zoning advisory commission, and that the city council is the final decision body with regards to the rezoning request. From there, if it's approved, it will go through a site plan review process, and prior to the development of that parcel, it goes through our development review team, gets reviewed by several different board, or several different departments. They include water building, fire, planning, and engineering. In addition, we also bring in other departments as needed. And then, in addition, at the same time, the plans would go through a site plan review, but also a building plan review with our Inspection and Construction Division. So let's talk about the property. So this property is previously occupied Bowling Beyond. It was built in 1958. The site is currently vacant, that building has been removed. It's comprised of basically some dirt where the footprint is, and some broken-up asphalt from the previous parking lot that was situated on the site. The subject property is 5.25 acres, it has frontage along Hawthorne Street, Harbor Street, and Kerper Boulevard. It's primarily flat, but it does have, it does slope up along the southern portion, which is where our city's levee control flood wall is located. And there are several easements located on the property. So, this is a conceptual development plan of the proposed project, and it encompasses two four-story buildings for a total of 201 units. The site is accessed from Hawthorne and Kerper, and includes about 250 parking spaces. There is a park area on-site, which is this little area here, but it is in close proximity to Hawthorne Street and AY McDonald Park, just located just down the street from this location, and also Eagle Point Avenue is located up, further up from the location. But then also, what's unique about this development, they're also going to include a proposed dog, dog park location. So side access is going to be access from a right and right access along Kerper Boulevard, and a full access from Hawthorne Street. So a lot of the information I'm going to go over actually has gone through a development review team process already, because when we look at conceptual development plans, we want to make sure there's been some reviewed by the city departments, because we will be adopting, if approved, the conceptual development plan, which is what they'll have to follow. The traffic patterns, you can see before there with regards to traffic along Hawthorne Street and Kerper Boulevard, and then the proposed development is going to generate approximately 913 average daily weekend trips, and then also 840 average daily weekend trips, and then the daily trips for 913. The dual transit pink line, Robberg Avenue and Hawthorne Street, actually goes right outside its front, the front door of the site, so the large star that you see on this location. The pink line is a weekday, weekday schedule, regular schedule that comes through here, and will go along the property down Kerper Boulevard, all the way down to the intermodal facility located down in the Millwork District area, and through the Five Points area back to the, to the development. It's also near a city, a city's multi-use trails, so located on this map, once again, there's a star of the proposed site. We have the JC's Trail, North End, we have a lot of trails here located off the site. And in addition to those trails, we have a RACE grant that the city's received, which will include a bike hike trail all along Kerper Boulevard, so I know there's been a lot of discussion about sidewalk connectivity. The site will be required to install sidewalks specifically on their property, but then there is a proposed bike hike trail as part of that RACE grant application that is going through the design and planning phases. In addition to that, that bike hike trail system will provide you connectivity down to the Millwork District, the Five Points area, and some other areas of our city. Utilities, there's, you know, the site is currently served by city water and sewer, but the city will be responsible to make some necessary upgrades to the sanitary sewer lift station that's located on Kerper Boulevard. The parking shows about 254 parking spaces. This is roughly 1.26 parking spaces per unit, and in addition, there is parking provided on-site and along Hawthorne Street. With regards to the zoning history and the comprehensive plan, this area used to be zoned heavy industrial, and 85 were rezoned to commercial recreation. This request meets the following comprehensive plan goals. We're here to encourage new multifamily development and proximity to jobs to minimize transportation costs. It is located directly in the Kerper Boulevard Industrial District, and there are some expansions by an existing industrial business owner there, and other opportunities for jobs located along that corridor. To encourage and create walkable mixed-use developments, and once again, with all the bike hike trails and extension of the bike, bike hike trail along Kerper Boulevard. There's also other amenities in the, in the location with regards to the AY McDonald Park, Sutton Pool, and some other, other amenities located in the area. Also, the comprehensive talks about to integrate a variety of residential product types in mixed-use areas, including multifamily products such as townhomes and apartments, and to provide quality affordable housing choices, and to continue to provide access to quality affordable housing throughout the community. Just one of the things I want to touch on specifically with regards to the city, or to the zoning advisory commission, they held a public hearing, and Derek Hayes of the Annex Group presented before the zoning advisory commission, he kind of went through quite a bit of information, which is included in your packet, and then you also had a handout, I believe, that was provided to you that talks about number of units, the breakdown for rents, the need for affordable housing, and their own housing study that they provided to identify the demand in our community. At that public hearing, we had several neighbors speak, which several spoke with you tonight, and this is a public hearing, so they'll have the opportunity to get up and speak again. We also had staff present a lot of the information that I'd provided to you with regards to the site, the location, the access to the property. And the commission had a lot of discussion, specifically regards to parking ratios for the site. Typically, for our apartment complex, we look at 1.5 parking spaces. This property is looking at a ratio of about 1.25 parking spaces, and when we look at other affordable housing developments in our, in our cities, some of them have that smaller ratio. But then also, we, the developer that's involved with these affordable housing projects have several projects located all over the United States, which you can see included in the packet. And in general, that's the parking demand that they typically see with these requests. And, you know, the commission discussed the site, they identified and said that it was a great spot, and the area needs a development such as this, and the project's positives outweigh what consider may, might be negatives. So, by a vote of four to one, the zoning advisory commission recommends that the city council approve the request, and a supermajority vote is needed for the city council to approve this request. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions this time.
Thank you, Wally. So we are in a public hearing to consider approval of a request from Derek Hayes, the Annex Group, to rezone property located at 1860 Hawthorne Street, from CR, Commercial Residential, to Planned Unit Development with PR Plan Residential Designation, and the zoning advisory commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone from the public to address us on this? And, and Robin, if you want to come up, go ahead, yeah, absolutely. I was just thinking, you know, you've had a chance to talk to us already, I want to try to keep the public input to about 30 minutes, so feel free to add whatever you want to, to the comments that you've already made.
I just want to say ditto from last time.
It's easy enough.
Well, last time consent decided public hearings, I was confusing, reading this, figuring out which way you were doing this.
It is, okay, it was, it was a bit confusing on tonight's agenda, so thank you for understanding.
Yes, it was, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sandy Plumlee, I live at 1317 Lincoln Avenue in Dubuque. I am president of the Point Neighborhood Association, and I'm here tonight to ask you to please note, vote no for this project, that's development. We are not in favor of it, we think this should be a recreational area for everyone in the city. We are not opposed to apartments being built on Kerper, but we think there's a better place to do it besides this area. I've had numerous phone calls and emails opposing this area, probably from a good share of the people that live in the Point area. So please, think about it. We're hearing all kinds of things that are supposed to be good about it, we think it's going to be terrible for kids crossing the railroad tracks to go to school. We know there's no sidewalks there now, and people will have to be finding a way to walk to their jobs or to school or get, to get over to Roundburg. So, I ask you to please think about it and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, for your comments. Come on up. And if, if there are people who want to speak, feel free to come on up and line up against the wall over there to get ready, it makes it a little quicker some nights.
Hi there, my name's Monte Thorpe, I live at 1925 Lincoln Avenue, lifelong Dubuqueer. I would hope that your minds are not made up already, I'd asked you to vote no for this. You know, as I was coming in tonight, I seen that in 2012, we were River City of the Year, which was great. They do not make any more river property, this, you can't get much closer, so I'm asking you, have we really thought of other ways to develop this? We went through a whole lot of effort to talk about the South Port area, we came up with, what, four different proposals on what to do with that land? You know, I would like a little more public discussion, I guess, on what to do with this prime piece of property. You know, we were told that, well, nobody's been knocking on our door for the last 12 years to, you know, develop this, this is great, we need housing, but, you know, maybe a little more public discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monte, for your, for your comments.
I'm back again. Just what I said before, I just want that to be on the record, I'm asking you again, please to vote no on this, or at least, like Monte was saying, is to put it on hold for more public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, city manager Mike Van Milligan, your most excellent city team. My name is Rick Dickinson, and I have the pleasure of serving as the president of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and I urge your favorable consideration of this, this issue before you. Greater Dubuque Development Corporation was responsible for the housing study that is often mentioned with this project and so many more that we're trying to get over. often mentioned with this project and so many more that we're trying to get over hurdles in Dubuque to address a very serious issue, and that is affordable housing, available housing. Now, in this particular development, I've heard it called low and moderate income housing. I've heard it called low income housing. I'll tell you what I think it is. It's essential housing. It's essential. The study we conducted told us that we have less than one-half of 1% of vacancy rate in our market. We are losing potential employees in our community because they can't find a place to live across the spectrum from high income to low moderate income. This is a beautiful location. It's been sitting fallow for a good long time. I understand folks that don't want it in their backyard. They even have an acronym for it, NIMBY. I respect that. But I do believe we have a quality developer here. I do believe that at the end of the day, the neighbors will come to appreciate the neighbors they will have in these units. I think it will be part of a renaissance to the North End and the Point. I understand the trepidation going into it, but I believe not only is it in our community's best interest, I believe long-term it will be in the neighborhood's best interest. And I urge your favorable consideration of the motion before you.
Thank you, Rick, for your comments. Any others? I'll check on virtual comments. Anybody?
No virtual comments.
Thank you. Anything from the city clerk's office?
Just the public input that is on the agenda.
All right. Thank you very much, Trish. All right. Last call then for any public input before we bring it back to the table for discussion. All right. Back to the table for discussion then. Mr. Spring.
I see that the developers here, I was wondering if we can ask them a few questions.
Absolutely. If, if you're willing to come on up. Yeah, please. And if, since you're coming, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for...
Yep. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, good evening. Derek Hayes with the Annex Group. Address is 409 Massachusetts Avenue, Indianapolis, Indiana.
All right, thank you, Derek. Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Thank you for coming, Derek. I did watch the zoning meeting and you, and we were given this lovely presentation about your company and everything, but could you tell the city a little bit more, like how many other properties you actually own? I know you just opened one in Marion, wasn't it, I believe?
Cedar Rapids.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so company-wide, we have a little bit over 30 assets, 33, I think, total right now. All different states, across the country, predominantly in the Midwest, but we do have some recent ones in Iowa. Cedar Rapids has a new development union at Wiley, very similar to what this would be, an affordable housing development. We just recently closed on one in Waterloo as well, which just started construction. So, you know, we do have experience in this area and, you know, our company's focus is to provide affordable housing units and make a, make a positive impact in the communities we invest in.
Yeah, it seemed like some of them you've been around for like 10-plus years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I guess kind of that, kind of going into that, so your company owns multiple properties already. Kind of what's your maintenance schedule for upkeep on like flooring, windows, and then like the exterior siding? Because folks get concerned, you know, after so long, it doesn't look great.
That's a good question. I probably don't have the specific answers. I know we would, we would follow whatever's recommended with the different materials. We do have, I think, one benefit of our company is we are vertically integrated, so we're developer, general contractor, and property manager. So we're single point of contact throughout the whole development. That's by design so that we can, you know, see through what we plan in the beginning and really have a say. And I know the, the property management part is a big deal. I think there's some concerns about safety or trash and that having an onsite property management group will really help with that. They take great pride in the communities and make sure, you know, it's as clean as possible and that every, all the residents are safe.
Thank you. We have strong unions in our town, and I know you're new to the community. If this project is approved, do you intend to hire local contractors to work on the project?
We, we do always look for local contractors. As I mentioned, we do have the other communities in Cedar Rapids and Waterloo. And so we have established a good trade base through those projects, so we may retain some of that to, with this, I think it's maybe a 90-mile radius from here, so regional, I guess not local to Dubuque, but, you know, we do try to hire local as much as we can.
And then, this is just a personal thing, I'm not wild about the color. Is there anything we can do about that, if approved?
We can definitely look at that.
All right, okay. That was my question for...
All right. While we have Mr. Hayes here, would, would anybody else have to ask specific questions of him right now, and then we can go back to more discussion? Yeah, Ms. Farber?
Mr. Mayor, there was conversation about lack of sidewalks and concern about the railroad crossing that's contiguous to the, to the development. Do you have any comments about the sidewalk or the railroad crossings?
Yeah, I think Wally did a good job touching on that, but we, we will be putting a sidewalk along our frontage of the property on Curper. And then as Wally mentioned, the RACE grant, I believe, will extend the sidewalk further down Curper Boulevard. We do not have any plans for the railroad crossing or, I'm not sure if there is any city plans on that, but, yeah, I think we, our site will have amenities, a clubhouse, a lot of areas that can keep the residents, you know, safe and occupied within that area.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other specific questions?
Just like to ask, is there anything that you'd like to say that you didn't get a chance to?
Yeah, I guess Wally did a really good job explaining a lot of the details of the project, but I guess I just wanted to say one thing, it's been absolute pleasure working with everybody from the city and different groups throughout the city. City manager, planning staff, economic development team, the Point Neighborhood. Again, we appreciate all the feedback and have incorporated as much as we can into the, the current development plan before you. And I know you guys do have a city goal of, of providing more housing units over the next six or so years. And part of that would be, I think, you're looking for a diversity of housing units, but part would be affordable, which is where this would come in. It is, the Section 42 program is designed to help moderate income families. So I think currently the 2023 income limits right now for our project would, would range from roughly 30,000 to 60,000 in annual income. Those are the people that would qualify for these units. So again, there's several occupations that fall within that income range, and I think this could be a huge benefit for the, the residents of Dubuque. And other than that, just respectfully ask for approval of the zoning petition and happy to answer any more questions or addressing comments you have.
Mr. Mayor, just one more question about the size of the units and, and how that variety would be mixed within the two buildings that you have.
So we have one, two, and three-bedroom units. Again, with the Section 42 program, there's a lot, there's a lot of requirements we have to adhere to. So Iowa, the Iowa Finance Authority sets minimum square footages, and so we have to be above those for each bedroom type. And then the layout is basically, it's, it's kind of curated by our architect, who puts a lot of thought into it and how, how to build the building and what units go where and how they can stack. And so the mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units we have is based on our market study. And again, I came back, it tells us what the overall demand is for the area, what, what types of units are needed. And so we try to maximize as much as we can based on that.
So the reason I'm asking the question is just to ensure that there's some opportunity for families, for young families to, to have an apartment or for those that are more than one person in the family, so.
Yes. Yeah, there's a variety of different sizes.
Appreciate that, yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Wethel?
I am really excited about a couple of things that you had put into the, and I'm sorry, I don't remember where I, which piece of the project I read this in, but the idea of potential rooftop amenities and dog park, could you speak to those amenities a bit?
Yeah, so we will have a dog park in the, I don't know, the actual, I guess it's the south end or the lower right corner on that plan right there. That will be a nice amenity. There will be a green space in between the two buildings with a playground, most likely, and then just some other community activities. And then, yes, we do have planned on the, so looking at the plan, the far right corner on the fourth floor would be a roof, a small roof deck. And so that would have a nice view overlooking the river and just really, be a really nice amenity for the community.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to, and maybe Wally, you could give some input to this. I did have a number of folks comment to me and contact me just visually about the darkness of the structure. I'm, I know it's just a proposed, we're talking about rezoning, we're not talking about the formal end result, but I did want to bring that forward, that folks had honestly reached out to me just to say, hey, we love this idea, but what do we think about it? And as I looked through your portfolio of other, other projects that you've done, there's a lot of bright build, unique settings, so I feel confident that that could be discussed. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention based on community contacts I've had.
Okay, appreciate it. Yeah, we can definitely look into that. It's not set in stone as far as color, color schemes, so.
Thank you.
We do want it to fit and be appealing to the community, so.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for... Thank you very much. I can't promise we're not going to call you back up, but thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Not a question for him, but it's an answer to one of the questions that was put to him, and that's about the pedestrian overpass over the railroad tracks. So the city in the past has applied for a federal grant to help finance a pedestrian overpass to improve access from the neighborhoods to the riverfront. And so I would anticipate continuing to look for opportunities for federal grants to help us do that in the future.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so I'll open it back up to any other general discussion or questions any of us have. Ms. Russell, go ahead.
Thanks. I think we're really fortunate when a developer wants to make this type of investment in our community, and I think it's really exciting. This property's been vacant for many years, so I know it's always challenging when things change in your neighborhood, but this project proposes housing that is so sorely needed. And I think it's good to remember that people in affordable housing can be your children, your siblings, your parents, your coworkers, or some of your friends. And I like the fact that it's close to jobs for people, it's close to the pool and parks for kids and, and other amenities right there for the residents. I like the fact that there's bus service available, and I think it's important that they're going to have onsite local management. I think that addresses some of the concerns of some of the neighbors, and I am in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the neighbors coming and expressing their concern. They mostly want some information and knowledge, and they love their neighborhood. And so I think this is, it was reassuring to hear Mr. Wernemont in his introduction say that all these concerns that were expressed tonight, including safety, parking, sidewalks, et cetera, are going to be studied and addressed by our city departments. And they're going to be, they're going to be looked at and they're going to be addressed, and so we're going to get good solutions to those. Earlier, Ms. Farber talked about quality neighborhoods, and I think this is going to be a quality neighborhood for the North End. I, I imagine that this is going to really attract a, a good workforce for Dubuque. I mean, imagine coming to Dubuque, you don't have a lot of money, but you can live like royalty right there on the Mississippi River. You got, you got a bike hike trail, there's a pool, Eagle Point Cliffs, the Hawthorne Park, all of these great things right there in, in Dubuque, Iowa. So there's a lot of, there are a few unknowns yet that are going to be studied and worked on and improved perhaps than, and I think it's going to be a really good part of the North End. And as Mr. Dickinson talked about, it might, it might bring, it might bring some of those things that you talked about, like a grocery store and other kind of services, now that there'll be some more people up there in a, in a nice concentrated way, that the whole neighborhood, the whole region of the North End is going to be improved for services, et cetera. So none of this is decided yet except what we're talking about tonight, because the city departments are going to address all the issues that were thoughtfully presented tonight by the neighbors, and I plan to approve of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Farber?
Yeah, so I also want to thank the neighbors for coming tonight to share their concerns. And I just want to share with you the fact that I've always lived in apartments in neighborhoods in various cities where I have lived and worked. And the buildings themselves and the neighbors in those apartment complexes where I lived actually became my neighborhood community. And I think it is just really a great opportunity to have this kind of housing available for the city and where people can start living in apartments before they have interest and opportunity to buy a home. And I also agree that it will add to the neighborhood and perhaps we will get some additional commercial amenities to support this in terms of services, and a grocery store would be a good start. So thank you very much for the presentation, by the way, and I do plan to support this.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Mr. Spring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by saying thank you to the city staff for bringing this developer to our, to our community. Thank you to the Point Neighborhood Association for hosting a meeting that the developer could talk with neighbors. Thank you to the citizens that, of course, reached out via emails as well, and then thanks to those who have come tonight. Sadly, most of the feedback I have had has been a no, or this project is not right for this area of town, or this project is for those people and not Dubuqueers, or there's no grocery store on this, that end of town, and there's no bus route. I understand and hear your concerns on change. Change can be scary. Fear of the unknown does not sit well with many folks. Fortunately, this piece of land's been sitting vacant for 10 years. No other business has approached to build a factory or anything on it. I've watched this last decade as Curper Boulevard has changed and slowly rebuilt. I feel like this project is, can be part of that rebuild. Folks need a place to live. 89 single-bedroom apartments help with that rebuild, as well as the 79 two-bedroom and the 38 three-bedroom apartments that are an opportunity for people who don't have a decent place to live and want to stay in our community. A place for aging seniors to downsize and stay in the neighborhood that they know and love. An opportunity for recent, recently graduated college students to stay. A place for your own children and grandchildren to live. Yes, there will be low-income folks living there. We want to have an economic diversity in our community. If you truly look around this neighborhood, meaning the North End and the Point, it has been a mixed income area already and has been that way for years. This project breathes life and energy into an aging and dying neighborhood. Do I have concerns? Yeah, I have concerns. This is a project we as a community have not seen before. So I'm, I mean, once again, we know change can be scary. This type of project shows that Dubuque can be a welcoming community to our neighbors, that Dubuque can be a light on the hill to other, to others. On a personal note, 12 years ago, I would have qualified to live in this type of building. So after reviewing all the lovely information and watching the zoning meetings, I'm going to vote yes on this motion, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson.
That was good. Makes me have to say a lot less. The Point Neighborhood came this close to some, to a big success almost 20 years ago, and the wheels fell off the wagon with the condominium project and the, and the old Eagle Point Fund land site building up the bluff. That, that didn't happen. I guess that still could, but that developer's apparently not moving forward with that and hasn't for that, that long period of time. But part of my thoughts then and part of the information that we were hearing from other people was, was the big nice thing generates other nice things. This is a big nice thing. This is, we're not building Cabrini Green here, we're building some fairly elegant apartments that'll be eligible for people with, with a little less money. And almost all of us started there. Hardly anybody leaves school or leaves, leaves home and goes into employment and is able to buy a home. I wasn't able to. My kids weren't able to. Yours probably weren't either. Everybody needs to start somewhere. If this development occurs, and it sounds like it will, it'll bring other things. This might be what we need to start really marketing some of those vacant properties that you talked about on Curper and get some additional enterprise going on in the, the old thermal line facilities, for instance. A lot of big real estate there that's sitting dormant. If there's a big workforce of people right here looking to, for a place to work that's close to home, my God, that could happen. If there's...
If there's a glob of people sitting there, some enterpriser is likely going to say, let's get some groceries near them. That's liable to happen. And the biggest thing that, that is going to happen for the Point Neighborhood is a huge infusion of youth, of mostly employed, on their way up youth. They're going to live in that neighborhood and hopefully fall in love with it and want to stay there or near there for the rest of their lives. Mr. Dickinson used the term renaissance. That's, that's true. Big deals tend to generate other big deals and little deals. I think you're going to see a lot of peripheral development occur around this that's going to be good for Dubuque and I think good for the Point Neighborhood. The geography is unique. It's, it's far enough away from where almost everybody else lives. It's not in anybody's backyard. It's across the tracks and a ways away from, from most residences. I think we'll, we'll fill that in. The tracks are a problem. The tracks are a problem everywhere there are. There's kids along them. In a lot of areas, kids in much more severe property and almost denser population tracks. It's going to be pretty dense in this small glob of people. So far, we're not running over kids with trains. Thankfully, the crossings are well-marked and well-signaled and gated. And we're going to have to educate the kids to, to stay off the tracks. I've worked 30 years in emergency medical services with the fire department. I never had anybody injured by a train who wasn't on the tracks that they shouldn't have been on in the first place. I think we can generally manage that. We've had a couple of other folks knock on the door and say, hey, I want to build a fancy fancy place for four or five people on this property. We said, no, we don't want to do that. It's not big enough, not good enough, not helpful enough to the neighborhood, not helpful enough to the community. This is, this is your little country club thing you want to build. You can build it somewhere else. We said no to that. This was a pretty easy one to, to get excited about as, as we learned about it. And it's, it's not going to come without growing pains. You all know that. Many of you pointed them out to us. But I think it's going to come, and I think it's going to, I think in 10 years, we're going to look back and say, wow, look what happened here. And hopefully, I'm right about other things that are going to happen around it. That's, that's the real magic of it. But this is, we're not building a slum. We're building a place for young people to get their feet underneath them and get a start in life. We're building a place for families to start to grow. We're building a place, God, I'm, I'm 71 years old. I'm, I'm about tired of shoveling snow and mowing my lawn. I might be looking at this place before too long. It's going to be a great place to live. Nothing makes your neighborhood better than a great place to live in your neighborhood. So I'm excited about this, and I'm going to support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Wethel.
Some bigger questions I think we all need to think about. If you have an emergency and you need to get to an ER, is there a nurse there to take care of you? This would provide for nursing. This would provide for nurses out of school, a place to live. And I will tell you right now, we don't have enough nurses in this city. If you have a kitchen fire, do you want a fire team to arrive as swiftly as possible to save your home and save your structure? We're going to be coming upon a population of our fire department that may retire very soon, and we are going to have to have new firefighters come to our force. If you have a problem that you need to call the police for, do you want an officer there as soon as possible? I do, because right now, I believe we're 16 officers down. Do you want teachers? Do you want your grandkids and your kids to have somebody to educate them who's full of energy, out of school, ready to go? And instead of leaving our city because they can't find a place they want to live, they go to a neighboring community? I'm telling you, all these things are happening now because people don't have a place to live. I asked a lot of specific questions about the building of the project today, but I think we have to look at this a little bit from a 30-foot view, because I know the folks who live at the Point need those people to take care of them and their families, too. And I understand change is really hard. I, I do. And I appreciate that you have advocated the way you have respectfully and kindly. And I will tell you this, my first place I lived with my husband out of nursing school was an apartment. And I've been, never been so happy to move into a place. I was so excited, and I took great care of it. And I lived next to neighbors that took care of it, too. And I know that's not always going to happen, but it doesn't always happen when you live in a house, either. And so I ask of the folks in the Point Neighborhood to please keep an open mind as this project happens, because I'm very hopeful you're going to have some neighbors that you love, and you're going to get to see some new, just energy into your space and into your neighborhood. I do intend to support this tonight, and I thank everybody for offering their information tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel.
Well, you know, I, I have to say, when this project was first mentioned, it struck me as weird. It just felt weird, the whole thing. And it took me a long time to realize why it felt so weird, and it's because I was really, really used to a bowling alley being there. This is me personally saying this, okay? I was really used to what I grew up with. I was really used to this fact that all my memories were down there. I mean, how many Fourth of Julys did we spend down there? You know, a lot of people still go every single year, and it's, it's a, it's just a part of, of who we are in Dubuque in this property. When I moved back to town, it was 2008. I can't remember exactly when Bowling and Beyond closed. I forget. I'm sure it's in the documents here, but I, not too long after that. So when I got back, it was an empty building, and then all of a sudden, it was just a big gravel lot. And that's what it's been for a while. And I ride my bike down there all the time, and I'm always going by it and thinking, something needs to happen down here. Now, I didn't grow up in the North End. I, I grew up on the west side of town, and, but I did go to Jefferson. So when I was at Jefferson for junior high, it was two years back then, I spent quite a bit of time in the North End there, and then went back to Hempstead for high school. But when I came back, and one of my greatest joys as honestly in, in running for mayor and being mayor here has been getting to know people on the North End. I've spent so much more time there to be able to, to understand why the deep love for that neighborhood and that area of town really exists. You know, Wally says that we're basically three different cities. I'm just going to use your words. You can tell me if I'm wrong here, Wally, but we're basically, we're the historic North End, we are a downtown, and then we've got this west end. And we're all kind of different from each other when you think about how that's all laid out. But there is a pride on the North End that I just have not, I, I didn't experience growing up so much, and I really appreciate it. I think it's just the greatest thing about that part of town and one of the greatest things about Dubuque in general. And one of the things I absolutely, that really, really hit me when I was running for mayor and, and talking to people for the first time sometimes about what it means to them to live on the North End, I heard the same thing over and over again. Do not forget about us. Do not forget about us. We feel forgotten often. And I really took that to heart. I, I thought about what that means, and, and I try to, I try to empathetically think about how to put that into action in this role. And there's a few things that really stick out to me about, about what that means, to me at least, you know, as, as far as not forgetting a whole part of town. One is, you got to feel connected. You got to feel connected to everybody else and what's going on. Some of the concerns we're talking about tonight are actually bigger concerns than just this project. It's the connection that people have, and the railroad is, is a real challenge for us. It's making sure that people can get where they need to go. They need their services, they need to go to school, they need to go to the grocery store, they need to go to all these other things. And we want more of those things on the North End to be able to enjoy. We don't always want to have to go out west to be able to do that. We're working really hard on that. We've got a quiet zone study going to try and make the railroad crossings safer in general, all through the entire community. We are looking at overpasses in multiple places, and we're looking at grants in different ways. Real quick question, I, I hate to stop in the middle here, but real quick question about this Raze grant, because shame on me, I didn't realize that the Kerper Boulevard Trail was a part of our Raze grant that we're, we're currently working with. Is that connected to the, the 14th Street overpass and all those different things? Is it a part of that same project as we think about Complete Streets?
Yes, it's part of that project with all the roundabouts, the overpass, and then the bike hike trail on Kerper.
That's awesome. That makes that project even so much better. I'm, I'm so excited about that. Go ahead, Mike.
I have to admit, I don't think it's though, I don't think it's north of Kerper Court. I don't think the grant included that. You may have read it recently, and it does, so I'll take your word for it, but I don't remember that being in.
There is a bike hike trail system that's part of it. That's been proposed when it went to, for that. It's part of the project for the design.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And, you know, and I, I was just thinking about that connection being there. That's definitely something that we, as, as a city council, I know will take seriously to make sure that people aren't completely disconnected by either walking or biking in, in ways that they need to get around. I see this as something that is actually one of those pieces. Mr. Resnick, I think you said this, you know, it actually could be sort of a catalyst to kicking off some other things that are needed in that area of the Point and in the North End in general. Not only is it housing, as everybody has very eloquently stated here, it also absolutely fits into the connections between other parts of town. And it is a step in the right direction toward more amenities in a place that really, really needs them in our city. So some, it's, we have a bit of a chicken and an egg problem when it comes to housing in Dubuque. We, one, one of them needs to come first. We need either housing or we need to have amenities that draw housing. And right now, we're, we're sort of all in on housing with the, the faith that that's actually going to drive some of these other things for amenities as well, along with jobs, along with higher wages, as, as I think Robin so, pointed out so well. I really think this project breathes life in the North End and a place that really needs it. With Mr. Sprank, you know, nothing's perfect, and we are definitely going to have some challenges. I'm very happy to hear of onsite project management. I'm happy to hear that we have a developer that's ready to deliver. We, we need developers ready to deliver on these projects, and we have somebody step up to be able to do this. This is a great, this is an absolutely great step. So all that said, I definitely plan to support it, and, and I'm actually very confident that in supporting it, it's going to be, it's going to be a good project. I, I think that not only am I going to be supportive of rezoning, but as we move through the next step in this process, I'm, I'm looking forward to being able to say yes to some housing, some really good housing in a really good place that I think will be a fit. In time, we will get used to it, and it'll be there. And we still get to celebrate the 3rd of July, just with more neighbors living in one place. So I think it'll be a, a really great project. We've all had our chance to say our piece here. The motion on the table is to receive and file and waive the three readings. So Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Call the roll. So with the miracle of texting, and no surprise to anybody at this table, Wally was right.
I'm actually, I don't even need to. It's on, it's on the record now. Trish has it.
So the Director of Strategic Partnerships, Terry Goodman, texted me and says, yes, in the grant, there's a trail 10 foot wide, the length of Kerper Boulevard. And then, I'm not sure if it was Cronin or Corey, texted me a map. So it shows what's being included in the grant proposal.
Well, and, and I just want to make sure everybody knows that we are actively advocating for moving on with those projects through a, a Raze grant that will be able to implement those things. And in fact, I'll get an opportunity very soon to be able to, in person, be able to advocate, advocate for that even more. So more to come on that. Okay, with that said, then, we've got a motion to receive and file, waive the three readings. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Public hearing number two is approving the development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Union at the Marina LP, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate to Union at the Marina LP and the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt a tax resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Union at the Marina LP and the City of Dubuque, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate in the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District to Union at the Marina LP and the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Union at the Marina LP is a subsidiary of the Annex Group. The Annex Group is an Indiana-based multifamily housing developer that creates market rate, workforce, affordable, and student housing communities. The group has successfully completed housing creation projects across the Midwest and is currently constructing a 216-unit development in Des Moines. The Annex Group began communication with city staff in September 2022, expressing interest in developing a multi-residential project in Dubuque with the assistance of the state's 4% low-income housing tax credit program. The group identified 1860 Hawthorne Street, the former Bowling and Beyond site, as a prime location for their project. Project will create 201 affordable rental units in the north end of the greater downtown area. Subject to state of Iowa and City of Dubuque approval, Union at the Marina LP is proposing the purchase from the City of Dubuque, the property located at 1860 Hawthorne Street, as a site to construct its latest housing development. The project is anticipated to begin in August of 2024. The key elements of the development agreement include the following. Number one, the developer must purchase property located at 1860 Hawthorne Street for $777,546 per acre for a total purchase price of approximately $4.1 million. Number two, developer must construct 201 rental units on the property. Number three, developer will receive a, a land acquisition grant in amount of $20,000 per unit created, but not to exceed the purchase price. Number four, developer will receive 15 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. Tax increment financing incentives, incentives are estimated to not exceed $10.2 million, or 10, actually, it's $10,261,927. Number five, City of Dubuque will sell approximately 5 and 1/4 acres of property to the developer. Number six, City of Dubuque will amend the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District plan to accommodate the issuance of tax increment financing incentives. The city will also need to invest just over $1 million to replace an aging and undersized sanitary sewer lift station, and these funds will be budgeted through the fiscal year '25 city budget process. This site is ideal for workforce housing as it is next to Sutton Pool, AY McDonald Park, and the J.C.'s hike bike trail along the Piazza Channel. Also, numerous job opportunities are within walking distance in the Kerper Boulevard Industrial Park, the Industrial Riverfront, and Chaplain Schmidt Island. The site is also easily accessible with a highway interchange for Highway 61151 close by. The dual bus system serves this area for easy access to public transportation. This all combines with the beautiful views of the Mississippi River and the rock bluffs to make this a highly desirable place to live and a perfect place for workforce housing. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Union at the Marina LP, providing for the sale of city-owned real estate to Union at the Marina LP and the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Do we have anyone from the public here to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, do we have anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you, Corey. Anything from the city clerk's office? Thank you, Trish. All right, seeing no other input from the public, back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing no further discussion, continuing our discussion from our previous item. We have a motion here on the table to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
We have a motion here on the table to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Public hearing number three is Fifth Amendment to Development Agreement by and Between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Port of Dubuque LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousseau, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the resolution approving the Fifth Amendment to Development Agreement between the City of Dubuque and Port of Dubuque LLC. The City Council has given additional support to the creation of housing in the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal Area. Multifamily housing creation projects are now eligible for either 10 years of tax abatement, followed by five years of tax increment financing, or 15 years of tax increment financing. The proposed First Amendment to Grant Agreement includes 15 years of tax increment financing for the project. A Fifth Amendment has been prepared, which increases the tax increment financing rebates from 75% allowable to the full 100% allowable. In conjunction with this increase, a base value for the property has been set at $499,800. The amendment also updates the schedule for developer receiving tax increment financing rebates and creating jobs based on the project timeline. This meets City Council's goal of more aggressively incentivizing the creation of housing in the community. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider a Fifth Amendment to Development Agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Port of Dubuque LLC. Do we have anyone from the public here to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you, Corey.
No.
Trish, thank you, from the city clerk's office. All right. Seeing no public input, back to the table then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Question for the city manager. This is the Merge project, are they going to move forward on that finally?
Well, you just recently amended their agreement to extend their closing date, and our discussions with them up to this point is that they intend to meet that schedule for the closing date, which is later this month, is that right, Jill?
Okay. All right.
Jill Connors, our economic development director, may have something to add to that. She's the one who has the direct conversations with him.
Good evening, Jill Connors, Economic Development Director. We've been in contact with the folks at Merge, and the Fourth Amendment pushed the closing date to October 31st with the provision that if we agree in writing between the parties, there can be a change to that. So if we need to push it a little bit further, we can, and they've indicated that they have the intention of moving forward in November.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. All right. Any other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. We have a motion to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Public hearing number four is First Amendment to Grant Agreement with NIA Neighborhoods Opportunity Zone Fund LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Rousseau, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council approve the First Amendment to the Grant Agreement with NIA Neighborhoods Opportunity Zone Fund LLC. The City of Dubuque previously entered into a grant agreement dated August 7, 2023, for the rehabilitation of 1398 White Street. The mixed-use property will have two updated affordable apartments upstairs and a commercial space on the first floor. The current and planned use for the commercial space is an African-American barber catering to the African-American community and communities of color, which brings a steady stream of customers to this neighborhood. This barber shop began operating in the unimproved space several months ago. Since opening, the barber has added two additional barbers and attracted two hairstylists who specialize in African-American clients. The clientele is diverse and travels from across the region, from surrounding rural communities, and from the five local colleges and universities. The rehabilitation of 1398 White Street and the creation of two new affordable rental units is ongoing. Since this grant agreement was executed, the City Council has given additional support to the creation of housing in the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal Area. Multifamily housing creation projects are now eligible for either 10 years of tax abatement, followed by five years of tax increment financing, or 15 years of tax increment financing. The proposed First Amendment to the Grant Agreement includes 15 years of tax increment financing for the project. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider the First Amendment to the Grant Agreement with NIA Neighborhoods Opportunity Zone Fund LLC. Do we have anyone here from the public to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you, Corey. Anything from the city clerk's office? Thank you, Trish. All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. I'd just real briefly like to say that I'm happy to see that we've created more work for ourselves by offering more of this and seeing more of these come forward. So I really appreciate the city staff and Jill, your office in particular, reaching out to developers who are in the middle of these projects and making sure that they know about this offer so that they can actually be able to spur their project on even faster. So thank you very much for that work. All right. We have a motion to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Public hearing number five is Fiscal Year 2024 First Budget Amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending approval of the first fiscal year 2024 budget amendment, which amends the fiscal year 2024 budget for City Council action since the beginning of the fiscal year and includes items which City Council has expressed support. Second, the amendment includes fiscal year 2023 budget carryovers to fiscal year 2024 of encumbrances totaling $31,298,728, capital projects totaling $110,561,715. They were not completed during the prior fiscal year and associated revenues totaling There are operating budget appropriation carryovers of $8,225,947, and operating receivables of $2,579,901. Also, total transfers between funds of $32,255,842 are reflected. The capital budget amendments total a decrease of $4,318,310, with an increase in associated revenue of $295,757. The capital amendment items include decreases of $1,799,346 for projects that pre-spent the budget in fiscal year 2023. The projects pre-spent include solid waste vehicles, arena drive load scanner, landfill excavators, and mainline CCTV inspection unit replacement. In addition, B-branch interceptor sewer was reduced due to ARPA or ARPA funds being used, was also a new grant for urban ag and production grants. The capital budget amendment items also include an increase of $1,297,545 to adjust the capital budget for the Community Development Block Grant, which includes neighborhood reinvestment of $736,729, the ONI project at 90 Main Street of $221,900, and Lincoln Elementary Wellness Project for $304,906. The capital budget amendment items include an increase of $96,703 to adjust the capital budget for the Housing Trust Fund payments to other agencies. The operating budget amendments total a decrease of $315,576, with an increase in associated revenue of $887,508. The operating amendment expense includes new grants of $597,574, which includes $597,570 for AmeriCorps grants. Community Development Block Grant expense of $73,249 is included. Civic Center payments to other agencies decreased $1,43,375. Finance intern hours were increased 0.75 full-time equivalent for a cost of $71,770. Finance consulting contracts for preparation of annual comprehensive financial report and restructuring budget book software for new chart of accounts for $318,540. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider fiscal year 2024 First Budget Amendment. Do we have anyone here in the chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, do we have anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you. Anything from the city clerk's office? Thank you very much, Trish. Back to the table then for any discussion. Lot of reading and a lot of numbers, but it appears we understand the move. All right. The motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on an action item on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function. And phone participants, please state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then the city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action or comments during, given during public input or that do not relate to an action item on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Trish. Do we have any public input this evening?
Jenny Peterson-Brant of 695 Perry Street here in Dubuque. Here as a private citizen and as an advocate for the ecosystem of artists, creatives, and culture bearers in our community. Just wanted to provide a comment regarding the announcement of the results from the Arts and Economic Impact Study that were just released. Wanted to draw attention to the fact that that economic impact study, while the numbers are great, that from 2012, when we had a $47.2 million impact, to now revealing that the nonprofit arts and culture sector has a $70.4 million annual economic impact, that that study does not necessarily capture all of the economic impact of the artist and maker community here. It doesn't capture things like individual artists like myself, who do a lot of events and are not necessarily part of a nonprofit. One of those events I wanted to draw your attention to is the 20 Dirty Hands event that just happened last weekend. And that's put on by a group of independent artists annually, and we did a little economic impact study of our own that I wanted to share some of with you from our event last year. So in 2022, we had 18 independent artists that participated in that event. Across the three days of our event, we sold more than $40,000 worth of artwork. We had probably at least 800 to 1,000 visitors that came to us from places, a lot from this area, but we had representation of visitors from Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, Kansas City, Chicago, Illinois, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Mankato, Minnesota, Jamesville, Iowa, Independence, Missouri, Moline, Illinois, and many other places that came to that event just for that one weekend. And so you can imagine the extra that goes into that economic impact study of people who are coming to those events, like live music put on by the Fox Den or the Lyft, and all those other little events by independent artists, and the gas that people buy, the food that they buy when they come here, the places that they stay, and the money they spend on hotels and that. So I just think it's really great to keep in context with those numbers of the real breadth and scope of the economic impact of our arts and culture sector in our community of Dubuque. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Jenny, for your comments.
Yeah.
Any other public input this evening? All right, seeing none. Anything virtually?
None.
Anything from the city clerk's office?
No.
Nope. All right. Then we can move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is COVID-19 and public health update.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and hear the presentation.
Second. With my Resnick, second by Jones. Turn it over to Mary Rose Corrigan.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Mary Rose Corrigan, Public Health Director for the city's Health Services Department. Just a reminder, thank you for your continuing support as we wind down hopefully this pandemic. And last April, when I gave my last report, you asked for maybe an update in October. So here it is. So COVID is still here. New sub-variants are emerging. None are really taking a big lead right now. Immunity from past immunizations or infection provides some defense against some of the sub-variants. Isolation and quarantine guidelines are still in effect, and they pretty much remain the same, only there's one little caveat change to isolation of when you're sick or test positive with COVID, and this occurred over the summer without much of a big announcement. And that is, if you test positive and you don't have any symptoms, normally you start your isolation, day one starts the next day after you test. If, however, you start to develop symptoms during that five-day period, the clock starts over, and you start that five-day period starting when your symptoms began. Just a small nuance. And we know that COVID is still affecting adults 65 and older more severely than the rest of the population. But approximately 97% of the U.S. population has antibodies to SARS-CoV-2 from vaccination, previous infection, or both. And this is known as hybrid immunity. And these immune responses to vaccines and infections are complex. Why do some people get COVID twice and some people have never received it? It's kind of a complex answer, and there's no global answer that fits all of the population. The good news is we have updated vaccines, available and effective treatments such as antivirals, rapid antigen tests, everyday actions. We know now that covering your mouth, washing your hands, staying home when sick are all effective, along with improving air quality through improved and proper indoor air ventilation. So the Iowa Respiratory Survey comes out about once a week, and it is the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, formerly the Iowa Department of Public Health, and the State Hygienic Lab run a report based on, they call it the influenza-like illness survey and program, where laboratorians report the number of influenza cases, COVID-19, and other respiratory viruses. And here's just a sampling of the report that was through September 30th. Expected to get the new report today, but it didn't come. So in that report, emergency visits were 2.5%, which was down a half a percent from the previous week, a 15% positivity rate for healthcare provider testing of COVID. And it also noted that influenza hospitalizations were trending downward. Rhinovirus, which is not on this chart, is leading the respiratory viruses with a 27% positivity rate, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But CDC reports nationally that a lot of our virus markers are trending down, and these include emergency department visits, hospitalizations, long-term care center outbreaks, and wastewater monitoring. So what will happen this fall? CDC expects moderate COVID-19 wave, a typical flu and RSV season, but that may peak higher than most pre-pandemic seasons. And COVID added in the mix could strain healthcare resources. So we're still uncertain for timing and magnitude of these diseases, when the peaks will occur. So we have learned a few new things, and more studies are coming out. Is long COVID still a threat? Well, this slide shows that although the incidence has decreased, it still is around, and especially in the, excuse me, younger adults. It's also most likely underreported. So the University of Iowa did a meta-analysis research against long COVID, showing 69% with three doses efficacy of the COVID vaccine versus 30% efficacy with two doses. So they studied a lot of other things in this long COVID meta-analysis, but the bottom line is the prevalence of long COVID was almost 12% among unvaccinated participants and only 5.3% among participants who received at least two vaccines. So that shows that vaccination also has an impact on So that shows that vaccination also has an impact on whether or not you get long COVID. So what about COVID versus influenza? This is a chart showing the hospitalizations in children for last year, and it shows that COVID was higher than influenza hospitalizations despite having a pretty significant influenza season for children. Right now, all hospitalizations, as reported by CDC, reveal that two in three are adults 65 and older, and 90% of those hospitalized had multiple illnesses, and one in four hospitalized are not up to date on COVID vaccines. So we do have new COVID vaccines. The bivalent vaccines we've been boosted with and previously given are no longer available. Providers are not giving them. We have new monovalent vaccines approved by CDC, and they include a Moderna, Pfizer, and Novavax brand. They're available via private insurance and commercially, and there's also free vaccine available through the Bridge Access Program for underinsured and insured individual and children, underinsured and uninsured. Basically, everyone six months and older should receive an updated 2023/24 vaccine, and that's what we're calling it. This vaccine does cover the variant XBB.1.5, and the Bridge Program for those uninsured and underinsured is going to be provided by the VNA and Crescent Community Health Center in our community. Now, the one thing about vaccines that's changed before is every provider buys them on the open market. They're no longer distributed through Operation Warp Speed and Public Health. So we, as public health providers, don't have a listing of who has what vaccine. So what we recommend people do is go to the Vaccine Finder, www.vaccines.gov, to find out who in your area has the various vaccines, if you can make appointments, and all those kinds of things. Basically, everybody will need one dose of the new updated 23/24 vaccine. There's a few nuances with children, and if they've been vaccinated before, how many doses they will need to do. There's a new vaccine called Novavax approved, and it is not an mRNA formulary. You only need one dose if you've been previously vaccinated with any other COVID-19 vaccination, and two doses if you haven't been, and it's for 12 and older. But it does give an option for people who are hesitant to receive mRNA vaccine. Test kits, free test kits are once again available through the federal government. There's a website, you can go and order those to have them delivered to your home. The other disease that and virus that circulates this time of year that has some new information is respiratory syncytial virus, or RSV. There's two new vaccines available in a single dose, and basically, they're for 60 years old and older, kind of based on your health care provider recommendation, and whether or not you have an underlying health condition, immunocompromised, a lot of those same kind of factors, we recommend people for vaccination. But like influenza, RSV causes substantial disease in older adults, anywhere from 6,000 to 10,000 deaths last year and a high amount of hospitalizations. So even if you've had RSV in the past, RSV vaccination can help you from getting it in the future. So we're recommending it for adults 60 and over, with maybe a conversation from your doctor. Babies born during the RSV season can be given an antibody, and it's also an option for pregnant women to receive the RSV vaccine during their pregnancy, which will then, in turn, protect their baby. So this is kind of a messy slide, but this is the one of the reports we get weekly to show all these six different respiratory viruses and how they're occurring. You can see that the numbers do fluctuate throughout the year, but this chart is a good example of why it's good to stay home when you're sick, because what you have may not be the common cold, and getting a diagnosis can help you lead to getting treatment or therapy that will shorten your duration and severity of the illness. So a little bit about this rhinovirus. Well, basically, it's the cause of the common cold, and most of these infections are mild, and they don't cause severe illness. But again, if you are of have a chronic health condition, or you're around people with weakened immune systems, spreading it to them can create more severe illness. And just the combination of all these different viruses circulating can put an added strain on people's immune system. So once again, influenza vaccination recommended for all persons six months old and older who don't have contraintegations. Now is the time to get it, and through November. It's never too late to get a vaccine. We've had little influenza activity to date, and there is a website, once again, to find out where you can get flu vaccines in your community. Antivirals are also available for influenza and are recommended. So the benefits of getting an influenza vaccine are it prevents getting sick with the flu or and/or it reduces your severity of illness if you do get it, reduce risk of flu hospitalization. It can be life-saving in children, and it protects the people around you. And one final thing, the flu vaccine will not cause you to become ill with the flu. This is a handy chart describing all the kind of fall vaccines and treatments. This is done by your local epidemiologist, Dr. Caitlin Jetelia, and she's an epidemiologist who I heard speak at a public health conference I attended and whose weekly newsletter I subscribe to. So she's she's a consultant, and on one of the CDC teams that estimates about 2% of the eligible population has received the updated COVID-19 vaccine. And really, the fall/winter respiratory season will be driven by the amount of vaccinations and how well the new COVID and influenza vaccines match what's circulating. So you asked for a public health update, and I'll give you just a little thing about things not directly affecting humans, but one of them is chronic wasting disease, or CWD, in our whitetail deer population in Iowa. It's becoming more and more prevalent. You can see here by the map, and the latest case was reported in Marshall County, which is more near the central part of the state. Three city employees took a Iowa State University course on CWD and are now CWD ambassadors. And one of the ways we help the state address CWD is through our Urban Deer Management Program, which I just realized is now in its 25th consecutive season. It's been very successful in keeping the herd at least stable. But we also discard, so that is a form of herd management. We discourage feeding deer and feed stations. See, oh, I got a typo there. CWD testing is available, and you can submit samples to the Iowa DNR, and we ask hunters and others to report sick deer to the DNR. And one final trend that's been occurring over the last few years, which is new, but it hasn't changed, is the increasing incidence of sexually transmitted infections or sexually transmitted diseases known as STDs. This has increased nationally and in Iowa. Testing and treatment is available locally through Crescent Community Health Center, and soon the VNA will also be providing that. Awareness is important so that people can protect themselves, and the most market increase around the country in Iowa and in Dubuque is the increase in the number of syphilis cases, which is concerning because of its potential lifelong effects. So just to wrap it up, we've had a relatively quiet summer. I think I can say that now that summer's over. I won't jink myself. We've had no local or national outbreaks or epidemics we've had to deal with. We look forward to healthy fall and winter, especially that now that everyone knows what to do to help prevent the spread of COVID and other respiratory diseases. So three takeaways for this respiratory season. They include, even though we don't know exactly how the flu, COVID, RSV, and other viruses will behave this fall and winter, take advantage of immunizations, treatments, and everyday precautions. Two, we will have stronger immunity against COVID-19 than ever before through vaccination or infection or both, coupled with surveillance and treatments. And number three is immunity weakens and viruses change and mutate over time. These tools are the best protection we have. And even though the CDC is expecting somewhat of a normal season for respiratory viruses, we could still end up with a COVID variant that escapes immunity at a high rate and especially usually bad flu season, or the peaks of influenza, COVID, and RSV happening at the same time. So we'll all just have to stay tuned for that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mary Rose. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Resnick, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So I was interested when you talked about COVID verse COVID-19 versus the flu, because a lot of people, just in conversation at least that I hear, say that we've gotten to the point that COVID is similar to the flu. So if you wouldn't mind giving me short answers, or you could just say not a short answer, okay? So which is more communicable?
COVID.
All right. And because...
I feel like I'm in jeopardy.
Correct. No. Thank you for that. No, the the thing is that I noticed that there were more hospitalizations, but maybe that's because it's more communicable, rather than my next question is which is more severe?
The severity may depend on the illness and the amount of immunity you have in your individual system.
Not a short answer.
Right.
Which is more needs more time in isolation? When you you, there's a recommended time that you stay in your room and don't talk to anybody, don't see anybody for COVID. Would you say that relatively the same, you'd say the same thing for the flu?
Relatively, because influenza typically lasts seven to 10 days. COVID may be less. I think the marker for when you can go back to work for influenza is similar in that you don't have a fever for 24 hours and your symptoms are improving. So they're somewhat similar, but again, it does depend on if the symptoms are still occurring, you still have a fever, those kinds of things, which can happen with either disease.
And my final one is I know that we we started out knowing nothing about COVID-19, and then we've been studying so much, and we've learned a lot. So is which is more predictable over the course of the infection, COVID-19 or the flu? We know what's going to happen as it goes along.
I could say neither, but probably influenza, because we monitor what's happening in the southern hemisphere to know what's coming here in the United States, at least in terms of strains, and that's how they prepare the vaccines, based on the previous years. COVID doesn't have that predictable of a level of change yet, and so influenza may be a little more predictable.
So have we gotten to the point that COVID is similar to the flu? And and it's it's, you know, it's severe, but it's not it's not any more or less worrisome than having the flu?
I I would say yes, but COVID has not proved itself to be seasonal yet. And we are entering the winter season, which makes it more easier to spread because we're indoors, but the viruses circulating and how they circulate and how they change is not proven to be seasonal yet, whereas influenza is.
Some great points. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I see no others. Well, Mary Rose, thank you very much for coming back and providing that that update that we asked for and adding to it a little bit, talk a little bit more public health broadly. That in of itself is good news that we can have a broader discussion than just one thing over and over again. So thank you very much, and thanks continually for the work that you do. Well, the motion there is to receive and file and hear that presentation. So Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is U.S. Highway 20 and Devon Drive Frontage Road Project Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Self.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Rousseau, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council award the public improvement construction contract for the U.S. Highway 20 and Devon Drive Frontage Road Project to Midwest Concrete for $17,879.44 through the adoption of the attached resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt that resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is Sustainable Dubuque Grant Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt a resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Did you mean resolutions plural?
Yes, resolutions.
Thought you did. Yep. And is Wethel, you're good with that second?
Yeah.
All right. We have motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Director of Sustainability Gina Bell is recommending city council approval of the Resilient Community Advisory Commission recommendations for the following projects for funding from the Sustainable Dubuque Community Grant Program Round 28 at a total funding amount of $9,950. The following applications are recommended for funding. Bryant School, native plants and green space for $2,500. Danielle Stowell, local foods fiscal sponsor creation for $2,500. Dubuque Community Schools, air quality indicator project for $2,450. Dubuque Rescue Mission, garden greenhouse level up for $2,500. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Really appreciate the Resilient Community Advisory Commission's work on this. These look like some really great projects. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Motion here to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, plural. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number four is Americans for the Arts, Arts and Economic Prosperity VI Study Results Notification.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Self.
I move to receive and file.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousseau, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Arts and Cultural Affairs Manager Bonnie Spurling is sharing the results of the Americans for the Arts, Arts and Economic Prosperity VI study. The AEP data collection from organizations typically takes place in the spring. However, due to the pandemic for AEP VI, this process was moved to the fall of 2022 and continued into the early months of 2023. The nonprofit arts and culture sector was devastated by the pandemic, which caused a decrease in audience attendance and subsequent job losses in the arts. However, the AEP VI study showed that Dubuque's arts and cultural nonprofit sector generating $70.4 million in annual economic activity, supporting 1,527 jobs, and generating $6.7 million in local and state government revenues, and $41.6 million in household income to residents. The $500,000 grant from the National Endowment of the Arts assisted by supporting arts and cultural organizations to remain viable during and after the pandemic. This is provided for information only.
All right, thank you, Mike. This is, I mean, this is great news. I don't think this surprises any of us up here. This is a council that's very supportive of the arts in our community and really appreciate being a part of that. Also appreciate Jenny Peterson-Brant coming tonight to tell us that not even that it might not even be all that there is. There's there's even more to capture there. So that's that's a great, great note. And I'm I know that just recently, and we've had some really great arts events in the community, and it's been wonderful to see that. Ms. Wethel.
I would just add that there's something we can't measure that the arts offers to our community, and it's a vibrancy that there's no number for, there's no quantitative data to say, but man, it makes Dubuque just a great place to live. So, yeah, there's no ommeter for that, but I wish there was, because I think we'd be blowing it off the charts.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. All right. Well, thanks for that. Motion here is to receive and file. So Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is Assistant City Manager, Corey Burbach, credentialed by International Local Government Management Association or ICMA.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Russell?
I move to receive and file and congratulate Corey.
Second.
Second.
We've got a motion by Russell, second by Sprank and multiple other people. Mike, I'm guessing you probably want to read this for us, right?
I do. Thank you. City manager, Mike Van Milligan. Corey Burbach, Assistant City Manager of Dubuque, Iowa, recently received the credentialed manager designation from the International City County Management Association or ICMA. Corey is one of over 1,300 local government management professionals, professionals currently credentialed through the ICMA voluntary credentialing program. ICMA's mission is to advance professional local government through leadership, management, innovation and ethics and by increasing the proficiency of appointed chief administrative officers, assistant administrators and other employees who serve local governments and regional entities around the world. The organization's 13,000 members in 27 countries also include educators, students and other local government employees. To receive the prestigious ICMA credential, a member must have significant experience as a senior management executive in local government, have earned a degree preferably in public administration or a related field and demonstrated a commitment to high standards of integrity and to lifelong learning and professional development. And now that she is credentialed, she'll have to submit a report every year to the ICMA documenting at least 40 hours of continuing education. Corey is qualified by serving as the Assistant City Manager for the City of Dubuque since 2017. Prior to her appointment as Assistant City Manager, she served as an ICMA Local Government Management Fellow and Sustainable Community Coordinator in Dubuque. Prior to serving in Dubuque, she also served communities in Wisconsin, Delaware and Pennsylvania. Corey has served ICMA as a member of the Assistant Chief Administrative Officers Committee, Sustainable Communities Committee and National Conference Planning and Evaluation Committees. She is the incoming president of the Iowa City Management Association and a member of the Alliance for Innovations Advisory Team. The Alliance for Innovation is a national organization dedicated to promoting innovation and improving quality of life in local communities. She is also a member of the University of Northern Iowa's Advisory Board for the Masters in Public Policy Program. Congratulations, Corey.
Corey, is there anything you'd like to add?
You didn't have to read that whole thing. I'll, I'll just say that I told Mike this. I just came back two weeks ago from the ICMA International Conference in Austin and I went to a lot of sessions on organizational development and internal workforce issues and employee brain health. And I'm always comforted by the fact that we're in the same boat as every other local government in the country and in the world facing those issues, not that we have to face them, but that we're not alone in them. But I was really struck this year by how many folks sitting in the chairs next to me were struggling with those issues and were just starting their work. Equity was another issue. And when I could say to them, we're struggling with equity too and we've been doing intercultural competency training since 2006 in Dubuque, or we're investing in trauma consultants to work with our staff, or here's what our core team is doing. I came home very grateful that you all are investing in that work and for the team that I get to work with on those things. And that's why that credentialing is, is really important to me. So thank you all.
Thank you for that, Corey. That's, that's great insight for us to be able to, to have from your perspective. We really appreciate hearing it and sincerely appreciate the work that you do. We, we have a, a general sense of how much work that is and how much you are plugged into everything when we ask a question and the answer comes back very quickly from Corey. So thank you for, for being here and being a part of our team to be able to do that and for being so invested in being a leader across the state and across the country to, to be able to gather more information from other people and share the best practices from here. And it's just, it's just great to have you as a part of the city of Dubuque. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, motion here is to receive and file that wonderful information. So Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next on the agenda is city council member reports.
All right. What reports do we have tonight? Mr. Sprank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had an, had a, kind of, I'd like to say, an enjoyable weekend. There was a handful of interesting things going on. If you want to do something in the community, there's always something. There was a group that put together our, our Black Business Coalition of fashion designers and fashion sellers that had a great little fashion show that I was just impressed with. I sat in the back and had a great evening for two hours with a handful of friends. As I know, near and dear to me is the food insecurity, amazing the number of 340-some boxes of food we gave out again on a Saturday morning. And then Sunday, the DRA had invited the community to come down and kind of Community Day at Chaplain Schmidt Island. About 30, 50 people, I think, showed up and they gave a really nice history of the, of the island where things that I didn't even know about, but I hope that, they hope to continue to do it every year to kind of get folks down to Chaplain Schmidt to see what's all going on. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Sounds like a busy weekend.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I, I got to participate as a consumer of inspection and construction services these last couple of weeks. I was unfortunate enough to need a new sewer lateral, which means you dig up the street and hire plumbers and, and other people and cross your fingers that you insured for part of it, which I was, but only part of it. And also did, while we had the front yard dug up, thought it'd be a good time to put it in egress windows. So that required a couple of city inspectors to come visit us. I gotta tell you, they were helpful, competent, smart and practical. It's a 70-year-old house, you can't do everything to meet the letter of the code, but you can meet the, the needs of the code, make your, make it safer and better than it was in some areas. I really appreciated the opportunity to watch those guys work and deliver the product and deliver Dubuque. And speaking of delivering Dubuque, Sue and I had lunch with Roy and Debbie Buehl the other night, the former mayor, and he said, by the way, tell everybody what a great thing this TV program Delivering Dubuque is, what a great job the mayor is doing. And I gotta, gotta add a shout out to Felicia Carner, producer, who's been doing those shows with him and absolutely delivering Dubuque. He was impressed, I've been impressed, and if you take the time to tune those in or look them up on the internet, you'll also be impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Wethel?
Well, with Mayor Kavanaugh, I attended the Central Curve staging storefronts. I saw Ms. Barber there as well and there is a vibrancy down on Central Avenue that is growing rapidly and it's because of the investment of a lot of people who are putting the sweat equity into that space. And so I was grateful to be there for getting to see the different artists who displayed their work and business owners and keep working, keep getting it done and I will continue to support those efforts.
Thanks, Ms. Wethel. Ms. Barber?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out too to the pop-ups down there and, and the merchants that were down there and also a shout out to DI for the Dubuque Initiatives for helping sponsor some of those businesses down there. And there's one or two that are actually permanent based upon some grants and then hopefully the others will also be permanent. But I was also impressed with the outcome and, and the outreach of the Dubuqueers that attended in spite of the bad weather, the rain that, that occurred. So it just was great and I agree that the energy is hopefully a catalyst for more to come.
Yeah, that was a great event for sure. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much. And we were, we are celebrating the arts tonight, so I just wanted to highlight one of our arts groups. It is the 65th anniversary of the Dubuque Symphony. And they, this season, last season, they are just doing incredible events. Folks that I talk to, I like to get their opinion of, of what's, what they're hearing and it just keeps getting better and better. So much great work, so much artistry, commitment. They love Dubuque. A, a community our size has its own symphony orchestra. It's always been amazing and it's been amazing for 65 years, but I don't think it's ever been more amazing than it is now. So I just wanted to say thank you very much and for citizens, it's time to get out there again post-COVID and here's some great music. And Firefly Theater, I just love that place and it's, it's an intimate space and, and our symphony conductor is so good, William Interliger. So dubuquesymphony.org. I usually don't make commercials, but this is really worth our time as Dubuque citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Resnick. Yeah, Ms. Russell?
Thank you. Well, several, several of us attended the developers roundtable and it was just, it's, it's great to see so many people coming together to make our community better. And I just think as those conversations continue, good things are going to happen. And I'd also like to say thanks to the League of Women Voters for their recent candidate forum. Mr. Resnick and Ms. Wethel and I participated and it was a great opportunity and good conversation. And so thanks to them for sponsoring that.
Thank you. Well, the only thing I would have to add is the city manager, Van Milligan, and I had an opportunity to be present for the graduation of our City Life class in Spanish. And it was, it was, it was such a wonderful experience, I think, for both of us and to be able to be here. And actually it was in this room, but we were out there and they were sitting up here to, the graduates are all sitting up here, the folks that had gone through the class to be able to talk to us. So that was a fun experience in its own right. But it, I, I love the fact that we were able to offer this as a city in, in a, in a new language outside of English, because we've offered City Life in English for quite a while. And the participants were so happy to be a part of it. And, and not just happy to be a part of it, but I, I talked to almost everybody that was there to be able to have a conversation about their experience in Dubuque and received very positive feedback about the experience in Dubuque, which I was also very happy to hear. So it was just, it was just great to see Dubuque growing in, in this way and, and growing into its own. And I'm excited to see what else we're able to offer in the future for this, but it was a great, great class and a lot of great participants. Well, we have a closed session tonight, so I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move the council to go into closed session in accordance with chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending litigation and potential real estate transactions.
Second. Got a motion by Jones, second by Resnick. For the record, the attorney of the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session. The city attorney, Colonel Brumwell. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.